It comes down to one of them has to live on my street, okay, or they have to live across the hall, like I, you know, I can defend myself, I'm not worried about that. But I am worried about being thrown out and given a place I call home that I intend to rent to family and live in someday, you know, against my will because I oppose it and I don't want it to happen. And I just, you know, the system is in place and we put things in place to make good things happen and, you know, just greed and evil and turning the whole war on opioids into money-making, that wasn't the point. You know, the point is to help people, you know, we're all here because we want to help ourselves and we want to help each other, we want to help our neighbors. And addiction is the evil, terrible thing and causes isolation and people to withdraw and focus on wrong things and the whole community vision thing. I think that could fight it right there and we could all help each other. And I just want to say thank you again and I'm hoping that, you know, our goal here is not to be terrorized by these companies that help so much money that they can just pay off whoever they want to, but I hope that the goal is, you know, that people can come here and want to live here and continue living in their apartments that they pay for, that they call home, whether they have a mortgage or not. And I think that however many supervision you have in that building, there's a lot of doors and a lot of windows and that go right outside and right over the bridge to Trenton and the war on terror and the war on opioids is bad and corporations and, you know, doctors, they can be bad, but there's drug dealers on the streets too that are very bad and that they kill people every day. And if you're just putting a center that's right across the street, I think you're just creating a cycle of evil and greed. And I'm just here to say stop and don't want that to happen. And I'm sure at one time, you know, maybe contention for good, but it's gotten way, way far away from where it should be. So please stop this enterprise and this corporation and I oppose it and I thank everyone that's here. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. 1A and Perry 43 Fairview Avenue. I'm a family nurse practitioner and I've been one for 26 years. And so I have tremendous compassion for people suffering from addiction, mental illness, diabetes, asthma, you name it. I put them all in the same category, which a lot of people don't do. So I, I, I hear a lot of that. So that's not why I came here tonight. I came here tonight to get information from Banyan and I, unfortunately, I, I feel like I'm leaving with more questions. As a provider, as someone who has prescribed methadone for people, and I'm not certified to prescribe Suboxone, but it's a good medicine, I feel like you want it both ways. And when I say you, I mean Banyan. We heard from the CFO and we heard from the business manager and Brandon, your story is very inspiring and congratulations on your sobriety. But we heard everything that Banyan doesn't do, we heard everything their treatment facility doesn't provide and very little on what they do provide. So is it a partial hospitalization program, your treatment facility in Langhorne? Okay, that might be true and there are certainly regulations that go along with that, but the residence doesn't fall under those guidelines. So it's a very sticky and complicated situation. It's not as simple as we're a treatment facility. What does that mean? And let me tell you, there are bad doctors, bad nurse practitioners and bad treatment facilities out there. I can tell you that with certainty. I would be thrilled to have a state-of-the-art treatment facility in my neighborhood. I could refer my patients there. I work in Ewing, I worked in Trenton, I worked in West Philadelphia. I've seen addiction. But I don't think this is it. That's all I got.
Keith Holleran, you saying your name, right?
Keith Holleran from 51 Fairview Avenue. I'm here to speak against the Banyan proposal. I agree with all my neighbors that have spoken. I think they've all said you brought some great points. I appreciate, you know, what I'm hearing is your support. I've been here for about 10 years. I've got three little girls, a wife. You know, we moved here because we love, we love Morrisville. We love the town, we love the character of our neighborhood. It's a single-family neighborhood. You know, I understand the apartment was grandfathered in as a, as a garden apartment. I don't see what, you know, I've heard proposed tonight fitting into the definition of what, what can be done in that, in that building. So I, you know, I look to you to enforce the zoning laws and I appreciate your time. It's ours.
Hi, Catherine Hodgkin. I live at 801 Crown Street with my husband and my 13-year-old daughter. We moved here from Trenton because we wanted to, you know, a nice residential, single-family type neighborhood. I am concerned about the zoning of our area as the only R1 residential district in Morrisville. And I really appreciate the thoughtful questions we're all asking of representatives from Banyan. I still have some questions. Do we know if the facility is going to be co-ed? How many bedrooms are in each apartment? I don't know that you know these questions, but I'd like to have them on the record. What is the advantage to transporting all those people that are getting treatment in Langhorne all the way to Morrisville to, to sleep? Is the treatment seven days a week? What will they be doing on weekends? How will they try and corral everyone in the building if there are only two staff members on site? They mentioned that someone will always be on site in case someone wants to leave, that should not, and that they will do an intervention. Do we know that whoever is on site for that particular time is qualified to do an intervention? And I guess lastly, as an established and credited business that has outlets in many different states, how do you go in and buy a property without knowing what regulations you're going to be subjected to? It just, some of this just doesn't make sense to me. So again, I really appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Cohen. Is he still here? Daniel? Yes, sir. Christina, I think so, Morganto? Morganto?
Morganto. Hi, so I am Christina Morganto. I live at 726 Crown. Just echoing a lot of what everyone's saying, thank you so much for your time. It's a late night, I know, and your support. I just am here to say that I am a recent resident of Morrisville. We moved here a few years ago and the R1 district was a huge part of my consideration process when moving here. My husband and I spent several thousand, hundreds of thousands of dollars converting our property, which was a multifamily dwelling, to a single-family home to respect that R1 zoning because I think it's in the best interest of the community to uphold that spirit of integrity. So, thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Morganto?
Daniel Morganto, 726 Crown. Simply put, I support the R1 zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom Newman? Amanda Newman? Okay, will anyone close public comment at this time? Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I get my name on that?
Sure, sure, come on in. Just state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Fred Calasco. I live at 348 Stockham Avenue. I don't know if I'm supposed to address you. Okay. I actually just had a couple of questions for Ben, Ben Associates. Can I ask them those questions? Because I think my question might shed a little light on a better understanding.
Could you just ask, because you're tired?
Basically, what I was wondering is, you know, they have a screening process and whatnot and it's really hard to address it to you. Ask them.
Yeah. I mean, you put the effort in, but I mean, it's just, what does he need to ask them? Because we need to really move at this point.
Just as a resident, the type of people that are going to be in there, like, as I understand it, there's a different couple of levels to what they do. I don't know if this particular property is going to be just a housing-only level to what their process could be. If that's the case, you know, I can't say it's...
She's saying, my view, your worry is going to be more than just housing, is what you're saying? Okay. And I, I don't know that that's, but it's not, she's saying, just housing.
Yeah, I'm not going to waste your time. My questions are pretty much for you guys. You might, might help the outside of the public room. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Sorry.
Yeah, sure.
Hi, my name is Rajesh Patel. I'm at 713 Crown. I share a property border with 705 Crown. And for those that have been down that street, you may notice that I'm rebuilding a brand-new, single-family home. And that decision was deliberate because I moved there because I wanted to raise a family there. I have a son that's four years old and I have a daughter that's up to term one. Their homes, their rooms have already been selected. They're looking towards that side because my son really wanted to see the river view. So unfortunately, one of his bedroom windows is looking straight or will, might look at Banyan, right? So I'm really concerned and I oppose what's going on, not only from a, from that perspective, but a single-family home was my decision to make there because that is what the zoning allows. I did not try to fit something else in that location. I actually demolished an old home to improve the quality, the character, the look, the value of the homes on that street. So I strongly oppose what's going on and I hopefully, I'm hopeful that you guys in the council will make a decision in the right direction. And I just wanted to lend the voice and echo all the comments everyone else, or echo all the comments that people said on my neighbors down the street. So just want to make this very clear that I strongly oppose what's going on.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, without a closed public comment, we're all going to be like going to work from here in the morning. I just want to say that this time, we really aren't able to make any kind of decision about this. It was an opportunity for you to tell us your side and to give them an opportunity to be here with you to speak. Until we know more about their facility and where they're going and what they're filing, is where we have to go. So we weren't making any decisions tonight. It's just availability to hear all of you and get that on the record and also you also. So if you wish to ask many other questions, I already have the time for you. You can do it, you know, outside the caucus room. That would be great. But thank you all for coming and we appreciate all of your feedback on this. Thank you so much. If everybody, if everybody please exit the caucus room so that we can continue with At this, sorry. Okay, at this time, we're going to approve the, oh, I'm sorry. I asked a motion to approve the minutes from 6:00 A through 6:00 G.
So moved.
Is there any comments or questions on any of these?
We made the motion.
Okay, call the board.
We made the motion.
Mr. Yeager made the motion, seconded by Ms. Larison. Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Mrs. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pepitone is absent. Mrs. Drysbox?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. Next, we're going to the seven, which is reports from the administration and management. The first one will be the manager's report.
My report is before you. It should look familiar. We went over it pretty extensively at the agenda meeting. There were two additions. One is the upcoming meeting of the Bucks County Boroughs Association. And the other is, I'm recommending that at some point, we don't have to necessarily purpose tonight, but that the borough obtain a line of credit, standing line of credit for future use. Did you want to obtain these one by one or?
Yeah, I was going to ask if you want to...
I don't want to repeat what's already been rehashed if I don't wish to, but...
Okay, I'd like to...
If I may, you know, after consideration and through listening to the presentation during our agenda meeting, I really want to say that I thank those folks for coming out and speaking to us. But at this time, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the interim borough manager to advertise the full-time borough management position, borough manager position.
Yes. Second? I'll respond second. I'd like to open that motion up for a comment from the public.
I'm sorry, can you tell me who moved it and seconded it again?
I moved it.
My second.
Is there anyone from the public who has a comment on that motion?
So this is a motion to authorize the administration to advertise the position.
Correct.
Morning, Burns 118 Green Street. I think it's a good idea that we're not using the, the firm that was here during the agenda meeting and that we do our own search for a borough manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close public comment on that motion. And I'd like to ask the board, if there's any questions or comments on that motion?
My only comment is I agree with Mike. On paper, it looked pretty good in their proposal, but I don't think it deliberated. The presentation was very good and I think it wouldn't benefit us to spend, you know, $10,000 or $12,000 on a search through it. I'm not too confident in it.
Okay. Anyone else?
The applications that do come in, where will they be directed to go?
We can direct them to the attorney, the attorney's office and that law secretary with me, if the council president...
So all applications will be either mailed or emailed directly to the attorney?
Correct. And it'll be in the ad, when the ad is drawn up, it will state exactly where they're going to go and the timeframe and all the information in there. We did an ad very similar to that two years ago and it'll probably be very similar to that. The council will see that.
Actually, can I ask a question on the motion? Do you want me to just draft an ad and have it published or does council wish to see the ad before we publish it?
Yeah, I guess see it first, the ad, and then we have a very similar before.
Yeah, probably just recycle it.
Okay, I'd like to see it before it goes out, I guess.
Okay, I'll distribute it to council and solicit feedback.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no other comments, we'll take...
I just have a quick question. So an email went out regarding this search firm asking for like a mini-committee. Are you going to do something like that for this search as well?
Well, I figured the, since the last time we had done it, all the applications came in and one way of doing it was to give them all to the council and the council came up with top, what was three or four out of them, of their, their names. And then the names were turned in and then we met executive for it. You can do it that way or I can do the same thing that Nancy Hess's firm would have done was be to do a, a search, I guess you called her, a committee that would work with the solicitor when they come in. All the, all the resumes to come in, the council will get them all. That's why they're going not come here to the borough. They'll be going to probably the solicitor. Is there anything else? Can we have an ad roll call now, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Mrs. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pepitone is absent. Mrs. Drysbox?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. Pass is 70.
Did you wish to discuss the presentation by the audit firm?
Yes. Actually, I think what I'm going to do, I think I just, actually, since we got all the information, everyone did, I don't know if there's any feedback about it. It's something I think that we could use with these Lopez and they've been between MMA and ours actually since, I think, 2012 through 2014 maybe. But I actually, at this time, would like to, I will entertain a motion to authorize the interim borough manager to hire Bar Kane Thornton and Company LLP for the 2017 year audit, not to exceed $6,000. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
I'm sorry, it was moved by Mr. Yeager, seconded by Mrs. Drysbox.
And I'll open this motion up to the public for a public comment on it. No one? Okay, I'll close the public comment. And council, if you have any questions or comments about it?
I have a comment. I'm not too thrilled with only having one firm do a proposal to compare to our current firm. However, I do recognize that this current firm has been doing it for, would you say, since 2012? And I know it's good practice to switch your auditor every so many years so that you have a fresh eye reviewing things. So if I do vote on this, I would also like to ask that it come around the, before the end of the year, we go out and search for proposals again.
If I, if I may comment, you know, President, we did actually solicit a couple of other firms and unfortunately, the timeline for response was just not feasible for them. But they did say that if we, you know, they'd be interested in speaking to us about our future, future years. Do we have that in writing or was that a telephone call? Those were telephone calls.
Anyone else wish to speak? Can I have the roll call, please?
Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Mrs. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Drysbox?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes. Motion passed at 70. I'm sorry, what was? Do you want to go to the next one on your list?
We can, yes. Some of these were housekeeping items, like the next item, starting in February, the assistant treasurer, excuse me, the assistant secretary and either the treasurer or the assistant treasurer will be attending council meetings. We figured since there's so many new council members, there may be questions about minutes or treasurer's reports, things like that. It would make sense to have those people present to respond to those questions. They probably won't sit through the whole meeting. They'll probably just be here for their portion and then we'll happily send them on their way.
Which is something that was done actually in previous years. Yes, it was. Okay, thank you. Next thing is the, you're asking for the authorization for the standing line of credit?
Yes, and this wasn't discussed at the agenda meeting. So I would understand if council wanted to chew on this or discuss it at a future meeting first, but it's my recommendation that the borough have a standing line of credit for future use. I actually don't think it's going to be an issue this year based on the financials, but I think the borough should have one available to it as a matter of normal business course.
If I may, Madam President?
Sure.
I actually am in favor of doing it. I think it's a necessary thing to have, to be prepared for the unknown financially. That said, I do think it requires some more discussion and some, some criteria around it.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak on that?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mike. I think we need some sort of policy in place for what it's to be used for and when and to reimburse it.
Miss, maybe something we could take up at the next meeting? Was there anyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. We just went to the borough hours we discussed.
Yes, and actually, I have not discussed this issue with the staff yet and I would like to do that first, just to surface any problems or issues that may arise. Perhaps you could leave that to my discretion or if you'd like, I can come back to you on that. It's up to you.
Yeah, I, I personally, how the rest of council feels, leave it up to your discretion. You have the manager working with them and doing their best with schedules and availability of them. And as you had spoke during the agenda meeting, that there might be someone that actually would like to work a little bit later, maybe have the availability early on a Friday or another day, you know. So you might be able to get some tape if someone wants to do that. And it would help the people that want to have one night where they could commit the borough home to address things.
We discussed the next item of email communication. I think all council members are now using the @outlook.com. I believe as of today, the website has been updated to reflect that change.
I think everyone says, what, anyway, because we went back and forth with test runs to see who was getting and who not getting. I think everyone's okay?
Yes.
Okay.
The e-newsletter that we discussed, I have discussed this with the staff and we're looking at what some surrounding municipalities are doing, particularly Ben Salem Township. They sort of have the flagship e-newsletter. So we will address some questions with this internally and figure out a plan and we'll come back to you with that in the future.
Okay. Anyone else want to do that?
Yeah, the next one is, again, it would just, as discussed at the agenda meeting, it's going to be our goal moving forward to have your meeting packets available by Wednesday evening prior to the meeting so that you'll have three business days or so to review it and contact us with any questions prior to the meeting. This will not disrupt your normal Friday delivery. On Friday, you'll get your normal miscellaneous stuff from the week, but it typically will not be meeting-oriented. It's going to be our goal moving forward to try to get anything meeting-oriented out to you the Wednesday prior.
So that's basically make sure that everyone has enough time on those actions. So, it's basically make sure that everyone has enough time on those action items to be able to contact you with the borough if there's an issue they need a question on, correct?
That's correct.
I think that will help quite a bit.
The next item is the PSAB boot camp.
Sir Manager, may I ask a question on that one? Can I assume that if we're going to get packets Wednesday night, then the Tuesday agenda meeting is fairly final, except for emergencies, we won't be changing the agenda?
That's correct. It will be my goal that once, and again, there's always exceptions or emergencies, but in terms of normal course of business, once the agenda is locked at the agenda meeting, I don't foresee making changes to that prior to the regular business meeting. Unless, again, it's an emergency or high priority, I don't know.
Good question.
The PSAB boot camp, many of you have RSVP'd and are planning to attend the boot camp at the Sheriden Hotel on Langhorne, which is occurring later this month. I highly recommend it, I think you'll get a lot out of it. Along that line, in your meeting packet is a helpful tool, especially for newly-elected officials, entitled Typical Borough Structure. This is an organizational chart that basically shows the organizational structure of the borough government in terms of reporting, and this is right out of the kit that those of you attending the boot camp will receive. PSAB shared it with us ahead of time, since there were some questions raised. So, that is available to you, and it, as of today, is also posted on the website.
Oh, that's good. Borough Association Meeting?
Yeah, Bucks County Boroughs Association Meeting is coming up on January the 30th, at 6:30 PM in Doylestown. I emailed each of you the invitation, some of you responded, some of you didn't. If you wish to attend that, if you could please email me your intentions by tomorrow morning, because we do have to RSVP you for that meeting. If you're not attending, that's fine, but if you could give us a heads-up, because we were just going to register everybody all at one time.
Madam President, can I ask you a question to our Sir Manager at Ensignsor regarding this?
Sure.
On the boot camp, you think you did send out who was registered? Did I see that?
Uh, no. I don't think I did send out who was registered, unless people replied all.
Okay. Either way, if we decide that there's six or eight of us that want to attend either to dinner or to boot camp, is that allowed?
It's my understanding, and I'll yield to the solicitor on a legal question, but as long as you are not discussing your intent on a vote, you're in the clear, but I'll defer to Randy.
Yeah, you, yeah, as long as you're not having any meaning to discuss council business, if you're there to be trained to learn how to be an effective council person, it's perfectly permitted. Okay. I just kind of wanted to put it out there. Just be wary of that.